Ralph Smith.
Steve Caswell.
Michael O'Brien.
John Cutler.
Craig Smith.
Would you all join me for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, upcoming meeting dates are October 21st and Wednesday, November 5th. I will wait to do the approval of a minute's Pam, if that's okay. So, the first item on the agenda tonight actually is the seating of an alternate. Jason Pereschiva is not with us, so Steve Caswell has taken his place. So, first item on the agenda is an adjourned public hearing for the Hopewell Sports Dome Site Plan at Auditorium Drive and Route 52. Two-lot subdivision. Subdivision. So, I have a motion to reopen the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We have been circulating a list of the issues, and what I want to do is, with your permission, is just kind of run through them, and I understand you want to do the stormwater plan first.
What we were hoping to do was, there is a number of issues raised at the last public hearing, and we're hoping to kind of walk through that punch list of what we documented so that if there's members of the audience here, they can hear what we've actually done in terms of plant revisions, addressing concerns with drainage, so that, you know, we may address their concerns, so they may not need to speak.
Okay, that would be great. Let me frame it by saying some of the items that are not on the agenda or on the list to be, or does my counsel suggest I just let them run down and take them off?
Well, maybe we could have said check off whether they missed that.
Okay.
We can do it that way. Oh, boy.
I've gotten this far by always listening to my counsel. So with that, why don't I turn it over to you, and I'll just kind of tick along as we go.
Okay. Some of the punch list items we provided here was in terms of an updated lighting plan we were asked to provide. That was provided to the town. We had some reiterations where we had some smaller lights along the sidewalks leading out to Route 52. We had some back and forth, and we were asked to put up some larger poles as opposed to Ballard-type lighting. Those modifications are reflected on our plans. Steve, if you can bring up the site plan, we can start talking about the buses. There was issues and concerns raised about the need for bus parking at this project site.
Okay, well, let's tick off the lighting issues. There was the spillage, there was potential out near the outside fields.
Yes, and we've shown what that was on our plan. To the consultants, there was some minute spillage, but it would be cut off.
Okay.
We showed the, well, we know the lights have to be shut off at 11:00 PM, that's town code.
Okay, the professional, was that Michelle?
Yes.
Okay, okay. And then there was confirming the fact that the lights would be turned off at 11:00?
Yes, that's town code.
Okay, okay. Now, I'm sorry, go ahead.
And we put in the standard light poles as opposed to light Ballards along the sidewalks leading out to Route 52 at the request of your town consultants.
Okay. Beautiful.
If we could show them the site plan for the, so there was some concerns raised about the need for bus parking on this property. So where we have the expansion area, I'm getting ahead of Steve here. So, in this particular area right here, we provided parking for up to four buses. This is in our overflow parking area.
Okay.
Chris, that's in addition to the drop-off area?
The drop-off area in front.
Being able to accommodate three.
Three.
Okay.
Okay. And then, there was also an issue about buses, the fact that as they did the drop-offs, they were facing in the wrong direction to get out there. Has that been addressed?
Yeah, that was, that's what prompted them to move the location of where they're going to put the buses to the east side of the facility, so they come in, drop off, and then are able to navigate to that overflow lot.
Beautiful. Okay.
There is a representative of the Appalachian Trail who was present at the last meeting, who was looking for more specifics as to where the dome would be visible from the trail. We actually provided a response to the town. We narrowed down those two locations. One location is approximately two and a half miles from the project site. It's where the trail crosses Longkill Road. The other location we approximated was about 3.8 miles away, and it was in the vicinity of the Conexity Parkway and 84. We provided what we call a predictability map, which was circulated to the town identifying those locations. It was, it's an expansion of what we had as part of our visual study in the EAF that was submitted to the town.
So to net it, it will be visible from two sites?
It will be from those two areas.
Right, okay. Okay.
The, okay, go ahead.
The professionals want to jump in with if there's comments as we go. Okay?
Good. We haven't provided the detailed signage for the site. We had some dialogue with the town last week with regards to the number of signs that we can actually provide on the site because there are two access points. What we have decided following that meeting, and that we're going to be presenting it to the board for our next submission, is we're going to be locating a sign for the site at our westernmost access point. We will then have a directional sign internally here, just identifying the dome here because obviously this road's going to be an easement for future other users in the rear of the property. They're not going to be putting a sign on the easternmost entrance to the property. We're also going to seek the approval of the county to put a sign on Limekill Road as well. Regarding Corporate Park?
Couple of questions on signage. Are you guys going to allow advertising on the fields?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so that has to be addressed as part of that signage, the signage plan too?
Those will be temporary signs.
Okay.
Well, the advertising on your fields are?
In the interior, on the interior of the field. They would be visible, we're not, we're not, we see exterior facing. They would be interior temporary signs.
What about the scoreboards? Are they going to have logos?
Yes.
Okay. And the dome itself is going to say King Dome on it, correct?
Yes, but their final design hasn't been done, and that's also a temporary sign that will not be permanently mounted to the structure itself. It would be manufactured and hung on the dome depending on the design.
Our understanding is we would have to apply for a temporary permit from the zoning administrator for a temporary sign.
Thank you.
Regarding the concerns raised by the owners of Corporate Park, we met with their engineer, and the owner wasn't supposed to be present, but he didn't make the meeting. He followed up with a phone call to us, but what we discussed at the meeting with the engineer was their desire to have screening within the fence area that's opposing their property, so we agreed to put six-foot slats in. Their concern being that if cars would park there, and they would watch the games in the evening with their headlights or something of that nature, they wanted to prevent people from parking there to watch games. Or people there during the day, they also didn't want people sitting there.
Okay.
We expressed to them that the fence that we're providing is 15 feet in terms of the chain link, and then we're providing a 15-foot net meshing on top of that for 30 feet. We informed them that Dan and his team have met with their sports architect, and their sports architect really feels comfortable with this height, and that it's going to prevent fly balls from going over the fence. However, you can't predict the future, and in the event something like that was to happen, Dan acknowledged they're held responsible for it. They would be liable if there's any damage to the building, any damage to the cars. We did determine, though, one of their concerns about the ball going through the windows of the rear of their building was kind of unfounded because there is an overhang on their roof line, and we've got the wires in between us, so it would be highly unlikely that a ball would actually hit the windows of the building. We also talked about, they raised concerns that these fields are dedicated to 13 and under. Their concerns that somebody's going to sneak on the field while the, no one's at the property. We told them that we'd have lock gates in terms of a chain and a lock on them at each one of these fields.
Okay.
There is a concern raised about the fact that we were slightly intruding into the Central Hudson easement. That was correct. The plan extended into about a foot and a half. We've modified the plan so that the fence line is 10 feet from the property line and sits outside Central Hudson's easement. We have contacted Central Hudson regarding if there is a regulatory setback for the mesh fence from their wires. They are speaking, they have other carriers on that line besides just their own wires. They are speaking to the, what they told us, the phone company and the cable company, and we're waiting on them right now. They do have the ability, they informed us that if they had to maneuver their lines within that easement, they have that flexibility. But they're not going to get into that detail with us until they find out from their other companies what they need to do.
Okay. By the way, the offer to the professionals is the same for the board members, I mean, again, if you guys plow through these, so thank you.
Yep. I know there was concerns with drainage, but I just want to kind of walk through a couple of other items before we bring up the drainage chart. There is the issue with the compressor. We provided the cut sheets to the town on the selected compressor for the inflation units. We gave you the level of the decibels at the unit on average, which is 76, on a worst-case scenario, which is 108, and 108 is when you're dealing with the condition where it's 100 degrees out and you have 95% humidity. 50 feet away from there, this unit will drop by 17 decibels. So on an average, when it's operating at 76, it would drop down to 59. When it's operating at its maximum 108, it'll drop down to 91, 50 feet away. These units are in back of the dome. 600 feet away is our property line. We will be less than the required 70 decibels in the town code to a residential dwelling.
Okay. Let me ask you a question. Is people living on Roethlisberger Drive, will they be able to hear that?
No.
They will not?
That's what our?
A quiet night, no cars on 52. I know that doesn't happen frequently, but they would be able to hear them?
Yeah.
Steve Trinkus, I spoke with the HVAC company at length about this, and I explained where they are and the fact that the dome is intervening to the road, and he said at 500 feet away, which is less than the 600, you won't hear these units at all.
Okay.
I mean, period. I mean, they're that quiet, so.
Okay.
Are they enclosed, they're enclosed units?
They're enclosed in a insulated box, you know, and that 108 is at right at the outside wall.
Ah, okay, that was the big.
Yeah, it's right at the wall itself, and it degrades as you get farther away substantially.
Okay. And then going out from the side, because you still got Corporate Park to your right?
Corporate Park is about 350 feet away, and again, you know, that's not a residential usage, just what your town ordinance has specified.
Right.
But even at 350, it may be on absolute quiet night, if it's a hot night in summer, you'll hear, it'll sound like a room air conditioner.
It meets the ordinance, it's just the question was, can it be heard? So, thank you. Anything else before we go on to the next item? Okay.
With regards to traffic, plans are not, but nevertheless, we've provided the radiuses for all the curbing on the plans. With regards to the intersection, which I'm waiting for it to come up here.
This was the intersection that they wanted made into a T?
Correct.
Okay.
This is on the eastern portion of, western portion of the site.
Okay.
The intent here is the existing island out here will be removed. The pavement will be expanded further to the northeast. This will become a T-intersection. The radius on this island, this kind of pork chop island, will be increased to create the, what the town consultant desired for that intersection.
Okay.
There's also concern about pedestrian circulation to the overflow parking lots. We've shown the sidewalk extending to this overflow parking lot to the east. We've also shown the sidewalk coming down and extending to the parking lot to the west. There's a set of steps because there's an elevation change at that location for the overflow parking.
You guys, excuse me, you guys okay with that? Does this close this in your?
Not so much that issue, but I was curious, maybe you're going to get to it, the parking lot grade across the front of the dome, were you able to work those and decrease?
Let me, let me go around the sidewalk, there is one comment on the sidewalk. The sidewalks on the west side that go to that overflow lot, it does come down, it connects to the overflow lot.
Well, actually, I removed that piece of sidewalk, that was the original Brendan, so now what it does?
Yeah, I think I have seen the revised plan.
So it comes down to the edge of pavement, it's a crosswalk, and then it connects to the sidewalk right here. So the original one was a direct connection north to south here, and that's been removed. So we'll all?
Yeah, I guess the only, I mean, I'm just wondering if that connection can be improved a little bit, because, I mean, when people get out of their cars, their instinct is going to take them, you know, the shortest path to get to, that they need to get to at the dome. They need to get to, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but they need to get to the west side, that sidewalk, to be able to navigate to the front of the dome to the entrance.
Yeah, what we could do is we could extend the sidewalk here?
Yeah, along, that's what I think would be appropriate.
And then make the connection here in a 90-degree intersection.
Yeah, because I think?
I mean, it's all pretty much on grade, it's less than a foot, and Brendan's right, you know, just like at the mall, you're going to take the shortest distance between two points, so we can make a 90 there to make that connection.
Good, thank you. I think that would help.
Anything else from the professionals on that one?
I think the other thing he was talking about was the grading, Steve, for the front parking lot?
Yeah, I've done about half of the lot, we are going to 5%.
He's going to?
To 5% grade as Joe and Brendan suggested, and as we said at the last hearing, that and the hydraulic grain line analysis we'll provide is a condition of approval, but I've done about half of the lot at 5%.
Okay.
I just have to finish the rest.
We talked about the lighting. I know a landscaping plan has been provided to the town.
Okay. Michelle, any response on, have you had a chance to look at it?
Yeah, they're looking at it right now, so I'll just have comments shortly on that.
You mean tonight, or?
No, next week, yep.
Thank you. I think the next one was pedestrian access, I think we just dealt with that one?
Yep, we did.
Okay.
We talked about the T-intersection.
Yep.
And the construction phasing plan has been updated.
Okay.
Now, Steve's going to talk about the drainage associated with the project, and he's going to talk about the pre-development conditions versus the post-development conditions for this project, and the benefits to the off-site associated with this.
Okay.
Chris, I'll ask you to move the slides. Steve Trinkus, for the record, Scott's request, we put together this summary of the drainage for the site. Currently, 97.4 acres of the entire Brightland Solar property drains to the north to Gildersleeve Brook. Of that 97 acres, almost 40 is impervious cover. The original IBM approvals on the Brightland Solar site called for a total of 51 acres of impervious cover. So there is an additional 11.3 acres that could be built on this site. Two acres was a new building at the southern end of the site with about 11.3 acres of parking and buildings located on the front portion where King Dome is located. There were three detention basins constructed as part of the IBM site, two interconnected ponds in the northeast corner draining to Gildersleeve, and one pond on the west side draining to Wickapie Creek. Currently, there's 17 acres that drains to Wickapie Creek with about 4.4 acres of impervious cover. As far as the total watersheds, both Gildersleeve and Wickapie eventually joined Fishkill Creek north of Route 52. Thanks to Joe Morris, Joe Dennis's analysis, Morris Associates, we have the whole watershed evaluated. The total Brightland Solar site is 120 acres. Gildersleeve Creek has a 1,700-acre watershed, Wickapie 5,850, and Fishkill Creek has 100,000-plus acres to give you kind of a scale of magnitude here. This is the entire watershed map that put together, you know, here is the whole site area, Wickapie Creek, Gildersleeve, and Fishkill Creek here in the Lake City neighborhood in that portion. This is a little bit better image where it shows the buildings, this is the Brightland Solar site, the IBM East Campus, so you have Wickapie Creek coming through here, you know, Gildersleeve, and then Fishkill Creek coming down. So what I did is I took the Brightland Solar site with where the water goes now, and again, here's the three areas. These two green areas, this is the dark green, both go to the two basins that are in the northeast corner of the site. This one goes to the western basin, which is here. On the site plan, here are the two ponds, in the northeast corner here is the western pond. Under the existing conditions today, this is the pre-development analysis for the two watersheds, so there's a total of 608 cubic feet per second for the 100-year storm. For storms up through the 10, from the water quality storm through the 10-year storm, the ponds are doing their job, they're reducing 340 cubic feet per second down to just about 46. For the 25, 50, 100, the model shows the pond overtopping, and this is the result of the IBM ponds being modeled with modified rational back 30 years ago versus using TR-55 today, which is a much more accurate model. Modified rational was not designed to model detention ponds. This is the proposed conditions on the site, so again, the green area is tributary towards the front, the dark green area, which is almost black here, is also to the front. This is the western area, that's unchanged, but the orange and this dark blue are areas that used to go to the front that are now going to go to the west. So basically, we're, the reduction of area to the Gildersleeve is from 97.4 acres to 65.4, and the impervious cover reduction is from 39.7 to 23.8 acres. So substantial reduction both of drainage area itself plus impervious area. And I put the images side by side, so you can really see, you know, all of this goes out here now, in the future, only these two pieces go out. So visually, you can see the difference it occurs that way. And we've gone through the different analyses. This is the existing watershed area, mostly consisting of Brightland Solar property that goes to the basin closest to John Jay, so with the 100-year event, you have 234 CFS being reduced to about 45, which is a reduction of 189 cubic feet per second. The smaller green area that goes to the new basin that we're modifying, 100-year event is 210 CFS being reduced to 105, basically a 50% reduction there. When we look at the combined, you have 608, and going out, it's going to be 147, so it's a reduction of 460 cubic feet per second, a substantial reduction. What's really most important, in my professional opinion, are the smaller storm events from the water quality storm to the two-year event, because these are the rainfall events that occur most frequently, and we've got very significant reductions in those. I mean, basically a 50% reduction from 19 to, you know, 10. And again, these are the storms that will really benefit the drainage situation going to the north. To the water being diverted to the west, this is, flows into our new basin where we eliminate one ball field, so we have 215 CFS being reduced to 97, and again, less than 50%, you know, going out. We combine that with the basin, the western basin, and again, we have 193 going in there, 61 going out, and 2/3 of that flow is being detained, so again, very big reductions across the board. This is the table that Morris Associates put together, and Joe, if you want to walk through this a little bit, I prefer you to do it, because I didn't have a lot to look through it.
Sure. Yeah. What we analyzed was the overall watershed around the project, as Steve had mentioned. We looked at the Gildersleeve Brook watershed, the Wickapie Creek watersheds, and then took the information from Steve's model and placed that within these other watersheds, and looked at the design points, which is what we're showing. Oops. Sorry. Pushed the wrong button. All right. Maybe I want the, do you have a regular? Is there a pointer? So up here, we have, this column is like the existing condition, flow rates, you know, it's pretty small, and then we looked at, yeah, if you can blow it up some. We really focused in on the 100-year storm event, because that was, what we felt was the critical, largest event, just to get an idea of what the comparable change in the watershed was going to be. So we looked at the design point for the Wickapie Creek side, and then we looked at the proposed condition, and then again, we looked at it after they made further changes, and we're showing that the Wickapie Creek is really not affected by the project, and the Gildersleeve Brook is taking a large reduction in flow, as it's shown here, these numbers in parentheses are negative numbers. And then the Fishkill Creek, because of its size and overall watershed, again, is really not affected at all, a very insignificant number there. So that was looking at it based on flow rate, we also looked at water surface elevations for the different streams. Again, it's very minimal change to the elevation, you know, basically insignificant based on the amount of assumptions involved. And we also looked at the velocity of, you know, typical, we had to take some typical cross-sections that we studied in these different locations, and it basically shows no change in the velocity of the stream in those points. So that's pretty much what we evaluated.
Joe, are there any unanswered questions still?
No, I'd say, you know, based on the amount of work Steve's done, and the town has, you know, worked together with him to get these, you know, to get the model and get the drainage analyzed, I really feel it's, you know, it's been very well considered, all the different factors, and, you know, they've done a lot, they've made cut changes in their project to accommodate the concern. So I really don't think we could have them do anymore.
And it sounds like you substantiate the net finding that this is an improvement overall.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
All right.
Any other questions for Joe before? Okay, thank you. Any other points? Okay, so let's run down the rest of the, there's a whole bunch of issues that are being still addressed by the town. Just want to make sure of you folks, and that is the East Fishkill resident use, including the schools, the rates, that kind of thing, that's with the town. Water and sewage is with the town. Limekill Road access is with the town.
You want, just the law requires that there be a written agreement between the town board and the applicant with respect to the community benefits.
Right.
We have spoken with them, we're in the process of drafting that agreement, they've met with the Recreation Advisory Board, gone over the proposals, it would be a combination of reduced fees, time preferences, access for town-sponsored teams and leagues, things like that. They'll be all spelled out in writing and agreed to between the applicant and the town board. With respect to the sewer, we have an A and B scenario. There's a, will be a sewer district formed in this Route 52 corridor for the commercial properties. We have several which already have indicated they want to be included in it. It would also potentially address the sewer with the rest of the former IBM site, the west complex. That design would be to bring the sewer along 52. That design would be to bring the sewer along 52. And then the A and B option, as I mentioned, is the worst case for A, the most costly, which would be planned for, would be to connect it into the town's plant here in Hamlet, and that would be through the Wildflower pump station that was put in for the Wildflower development on 52. The second alternate plan is that we are in discussions with the IBM Corporation. It has a very large treatment facility which has excess capacity. But, you know, so whichever-- if that happens first, the pipe will go to the right. If not, the pipe goes straight and connects elsewhere.
Okay.
And the water, the Shenandoah water line goes right across there, so there'll be the formation of a water district. The flow will either come from Fishkill or from the county water main, both of which are capable to be accessed there, so.
Okay. A lot of good information. I was just saying, those are with us.
Oh, I'm sorry. I just wanted everyone to know what--
No, but that's good. That's good information, I think, you know, the folks. Anything else, Tom, or? Okay. The evacuation plans, that is part of the building code. I know there've been a request for seeing similar evacuation plans for similar buildings, but hopefully those will can be considered.
Could I just speak to the building code issue? I know it was raised during the public hearing, and I think we should put this to rest as, you know, clear as possible.
Please.
The planning board's jurisdiction is over the site plan. That's the location of the building, the parking, the access, all the things we've heard discussed, the water, the drainage, et cetera. If the applicant obtains approval of their site plan, the next level is to file a building permit. And that building permit is filed with the town building department, which under state law must enforce the New York State Uniform Fire Prevention and Building Code. And that code has all kinds of classifications and issues, and frequently, when you have different kinds of structures that are somewhat different than what you usually handle, you bring in the assistance of the New York State Division of Codes, which is part of the New York State Department of State. We've done this before with other buildings in the town when there's a question about the building type, whether they should be sprinkled, et cetera. This type of structure would obviously be reviewed by the state. We go over the engineering plans. It's not the first time the state has been dealing with it. Elsewhere in the state, there are domes, maybe the size is different, et cetera. So all of that takes place, the wind loads, the everything you can think of. I'm a lawyer, not an engineer, but all those issues. Additionally, the New York State Fire Code would say before they could even occupy the premises, there's going to be a certification as to the capacities, the fire exits. They've been to the Fire Advisory Board several times, and they've made modifications from our own firefighter's point of view for access of vehicles around the facility, et cetera. The state code will provide a collapse rate, you know, evacuation. That's all going to be intermixed between the fire approvals and the state building code. It's, you know, New York State is very sophisticated with that, and this will be submitted. So my only point is, is that this board, with all due respect to you and your great abundance of power and approval authority, you don't really deal with the structure. You don't deal with the bearing of the foundation, the how the building stays up. That's done by another whole group of professionals, both not only in the town, but obviously, we will be seeking the assistance, which is readily available from New York State.
Okay. Well, please don't forget that it really is all about us, okay?
Absolutely.
Okay. The tunnel under the perimeter road is off the table for now.
It's off the table.
Okay. The parking for tournaments, again, it's assumed that those will be under 1,000 people, so therefore, any special events will be on a permitting basis, so that--
Special events, we have to come back to the town board for a special use permit for those. We understand some of the items that you'd be requesting at that time as well, traffic control plan, parking plan, approval from the Department of Health for sanitary and water facilities.
Okay, great. Okay. Let me start with the board members. Any other issues that we have not covered? Professionals, any issues that we have not covered? Okay. With that, I would like to invite members of the public to come up. I would ask, the first person can just start speaking and sign in afterwards. So go ahead.
My name is Bob Wilbar, and I have a few questions as usual. One of the things I-- that sort of bothered me, and I guess a lot of things bother me, is when I mentioned the evacuation plan at the second public hearing, Mr. Frioli's son jumped up and said, "We've got it all covered. We've got the whole plan in place, and everything's taken care of." Now, if you've got to go through all these things with New York State, that statement can't possibly be true.
The second thing I'd like to bring up-- Well, excuse me, wouldn't they be able to submit their concept of a plan to the state, and the state would review it and either approve it or reject it?
No, but then it wouldn't be all set, would it?
Well, I think what he meant, I mean, as I interpreted, Bob, but you can, was that they believed that they had to have a plan, and that they-- again, this is not the first time they've constructed one of these buildings. I interpreted that as they have a plan that they thought was going to pass muster, and that that was not--
Those are a lot different words than I heard, but okay.
Okay.
That's fine. That just occurred to me. The second one was the sound. If you can hear it, is the magic word that I hear for residential neighborhood. And I can hear coyotes in the distance, a good mile, mile and a half away, and they're pretty quiet compared to generators. Now, you don't hear them all the time, because you get enforcement and negative enforcement and positive enforcement of sounds as they bounce off things, as they bounce off buildings. Rather than going with so many DV, like you can just have an air conditioner in your room at all the times for our generator, I would like to see something like, "You can't hear it," for residential residents.
Well, the town about two years ago adopted a noise ordinance.
Yeah.
It was very controversial. But that noise ordinance is the law of the town of East Fishkill.
Correct.
It's-- and that noise ordinance limits sound based on decibels, distances from property lines. There's different standards for commercial and residential districts. It's all spelled out there. So if an applicant complies with the law, they're entitled to have their--
The one thing I don't remember reading in that, and I just got done reading it, was that so many decibels, period. It doesn't say so many decibels on a windy night, on a quiet night, on a heavy night, on a dew-driven night, when there's a lot of moisture in the air, when the relative humidity's down. It doesn't say any of those things.
Probably because that would probably be an unconstitutional law.
Right.
In evaluating the law, the law has to be constitutional, has to be objective standard. And I think that all those variables, what you might describe as a still night may not be a still night to someone else, what could be--
But we could define still night. That would be the--
Well, but I don't think the courts have done that. And our law now does not have that.
Okay, I'm just saying that I don't think that truly covers making the statement, "They will never hear it."
No, but I also think they presented information that indicates when you get even near the their property line, it's significantly below the--
They said that they had said the industrial plant next door would be like having a room air conditioner running all the time. That's the set.
No.
I'm sorry.
Sure, please.
Your town code, and I'll read it for everybody, under section 132-7, "Any unreasonably intrusive noise exceeding 70 DBAs at any time within a residential district or exceeding 75 DBAs within any other district between the hours of 9:00 p.m. and 7:00 a.m. Monday through Friday. Or exceeding 7 DBA before 8:00 a.m. or after 9:00 p.m. Saturday or exceeding 70 between the hours of 12:00 a.m., 11:59 p.m., or on Sundays or any recognized holiday." The measurement, and this is the key statement, "The measurement of such sound will be from within 10 feet from the occupied residences or other structures legally existing which are customarily occupied by the residents of the property."
And I'm saying, depending on weather conditions?
70 decibels.
Yes.
Okay. So we've talked about being 600 feet away just from the main property line. We talked about on a, on average, which was, I believe it was 76, that acts at, and it decreases by 17 over 50 feet.
My objection was when you used the word "never hear it."
Okay.
That's significantly different than below, below--
There's a difference here. We are working in accordance with the town code.
Yeah, but then--
You can't sit here and prescribe your own--
No, no, no. What I'm projecting to you is the code that--
Okay. Okay, guys, guys, whoa. Let me just say this, and I apologize for not starting this.
I just want to say one other thing with regards to this, is the-- Mr. Trinkus said that the sound will dissipate 500 feet from the structure based upon what was provided by the manufacturer, the information. So based upon the residents being in excess of 600 feet, one could assume they're not going to hear it based upon the literature that we've been provided. Can one not suspect that?
There's a big difference between saying, "My model works," and "He is on my model predicts, and therefore you will never hear it."
Okay, I think he said, "You won't hear it," right? We can let the record show. I heard, "You won't hear it," meaning there might be a time when you can hear it faint.
Stuff all the time?
Again, I didn't hear the word "never." So guys, let me, let me just, I should have probably started this.
He intended to meet the code.
Is, guys--
You will meet the code.
Bob?
That's fine. I'm just trying to get the record straight. Meet the code, I accept that. I'm not sure if the code's sufficient. I'm just saying, what he really said was, "I'll meet the code."
Okay.
Good enough.
Thank you, Bob. All right, let me just say, guys, what we're looking here is, is we owe you a thoughtful listening to your issues, but what you owe us is keeping this not highly repetitive and not rehashing--
I don't remember mentioning that before.
Okay, well--
Now I'm going to mention, now I'm going to mention some issues I talked about before. At the first public meeting, Mr. Frioli said, and again, I guess here, words go, "There has never been a collapse of an Asadi dome," and he said it at least three times.
We're not, we're not going to rehash this, Bob.
You don't have to rehash. I just wanted, on the record, that that was said, and I think he owes the public an apology, because that's not true. We already know four of them went down.
Go ahead, Bob, what else you got?
Okay, the second part, and when I was talking about the lawsuit and those other companies that Mr. Frioli and his absent lawyer have never heard of, my clients understand that certain content goes on, Donald Frioli has been in the air-supported structure business for the last 50 years, and he and Asadi has hit us the operator with the highest degree of personal and professional integrity and honesty. Unfortunately, in today's cyberspace, Google searches can produce misleading results. For example, a Google search might reveal a 2006 lawsuit in Missouri involving a company known as IPD Sales and Marketing, LLC D/B-A. Eight Asadi Worldwide and OO Air Structures is American Technologies and Investment. However, none of these defendants are Asadi, and none are related to Asadi. Neither Mr. Frioli nor any other shareholder of Asadi have any ownership, interest in any of these entities. Simply put, this Missouri federal court action, which appears to have involved the named defendants' refusal to provide discovery demanded by the plaintiff therein, for which the defendants were sanctioned, has nothing to do with Asadi, and Mr. Frioli and any suggestion to the contrary is not only false, but potentially defamatory. And the potentially defamatory is aimed at me. So what I did is I went to the Asadi website, and if you go to asadi.com, and you go to his page where he says, "Partners and affiliates"--
You know, Mr. Chairman, with all due respect, I mean, as town council, I'd just like to say that we're here for comments about the site plan, the project itself, and I think we have to be very cautious about using this as a forum for any--
That's fine, but I think--
I'm just--
Bob, I would, I cannot stop you, but I would ask you--
No, I will not stop. You can ask me, but I won't. When he says, "Potentially defamatory regarding me," and when he says, "Absolutely, no knowledge of these people whatsoever," I think what you're dealing with is the integrity of the company attempting to get something passed by the board. We already have the fact that Mr. Frioli lied three times about--
Let me just say, every applicant that comes into this room is not put to the test by anyone, nor do we have the right to, as to their wherewithal to build their projects. We've had projects that have been approved by this board and have never been built. But to allow this to be used as a forum to disparage a particular applicant, I certainly don't think it's inappropriate.
I think it's appropriate--
In your opinion, it is, but I don't think in the view of what this facility is for tonight and the project before--
If I just may continue for a moment, if you go to the Asadi site and you see two little pictures, partners and associates, there's a little guy in Russia. If you click on him, it comes up with Mr. Kogan and lists all those companies. And in fact, when Mr. Asadi got the $40 million contract for the Russian domes, there was a celebration at Asadi Enterprises with him and his son and Mr. Kogan, and all of those companies were listed. So what his coming in here and saying, "I don't know anything about them, never met them," isn't out, not allowed.
I don't think he ever said that.
Would you like me to read the lawyer's letter again? I just read it.
Okay. Never said they didn't know them. You don't say anything there that I've said they don't know.
Your lawyer did. Your lawyer--
It's embarrassing when your lawyer doesn't understand your business, I would think.
Okay. Your conversation is with us, Bob. Do you have anything else to say?
Yes, I do. One more thing. People were worried when I said there are dangers of tornadoes with domes. I assume that's appropriate comment, since we were talking about an evacuation plan. I looked up the number of thunderstorms in Dutchess County. There were 7,000 and change in the last 10 years. There were 39 tornadoes. That's an average of, if you take a rough, just a mean cut, five chances out of 1,000 of a thunderstorm comes near that dome, it's going down. Is that an acceptable risk? I don't think so. If you look at the dome that went down in East Windsor, Connecticut, guess how many thunderstorms and tornadoes there were that year in that region? That concludes my comments.
But there, Bob, don't forget to sign in before you leave.
I certainly won't.
Is there anyone else from the public who wishes? Al, I would ask you to observe the same rule of--
Good evening, Alan Klotner. I live at 11 Circle Drive in Lake City. A couple of just follow-up questions to the, from the last meeting. I just have a question regarding the sewer and water district during these A and B plans. If this is strictly commercial, as you mentioned, so there'd be no requirement that the residents in Lake City join, be forced to join this district? Thank you. There was no discussion today about any sidewalks along the 52 corridor to bring people across the street, so that we don't have people getting run over when they go to the pizza parlor or they go to Dunkin' Donuts.
Actually, I thought there was. I thought there was the lighting on the-- there is a sidewalk out there, right?
But it's only going to the corner of their property.
Steve Trinkus says two sidewalks. On the east side of the site, it goes from our site to our property line, John Jay, and after discussions with Brendan, we're going to extend it to the driveway at John Jay High School, so it'll connect to that.
That's what I thought.
The western one will go out to Rothiell Drive at that point, where the light is. Obviously, a sidewalk, at least my experience across the border, has to get vetted through DOT as to where that might be, but we're making the connection on our side to that.
Great, thank you.
Good catch, Al.
This board, for previous two months, have asked for visual impacts of what this facility would look like from the, I believe it's Four Seasons, from the, on the south, as well as from the west. There were some original designs shown some months back, but there's been a few months now where they have not produced these visual impacts that the board has asked for. Just want to bring up again that I believe there should be something written into any type of site plan regarding the running of diesel buses while they're waiting for games to end and play. It's great that they're moving in the back. That's fantastic. But these buses shouldn't be dieseling and running in foul--
Diesel vehicle under the vehicle traffic laws, and that's supposed to idle for, I think, more than five minutes. That's a violation, bus or no bus.
It happens all the time.
I know it does. It's a minor Mike Pepe's, but we get to force that with you.
That's the enforcement issue, right?
Thank you. On a Sunday, who's going to monitor people parking across the street in the bank-- in the bank lot, the orthopedic associates lot, and on Rothel Drive, to make sure that people, because it's going to be a lot closer for people to park across the street and walk in this, on the new sidewalk, thank you, to the entrance on the corner than it would be to park in the auxiliary parking. So obviously, the police will have to monitor that.
They get a complaint from the owner of the property.
Okay. Or if it's on a public road?
I would suspect, yeah, on a public road.
The stormwater mitigation plan is welcome news. I have one question. What happens if your estimates prove inaccurate and more water flows into the gilder sleeve than is expected? The project's built, it's a year or two into this, everything's perfect, but the gilder sleeve backs up and floods Lake City, who's on the hook to fix that? Because we had a similar situation with stormwater mitigation for Stone Ridge, which took many years to correct. So I want to make sure that the town is not going to be ultimately responsible for fixing something if the estimates are wrong.
Well, first of all, let's just say with Stone Ridge, that was previously approved prior to all the MS4 regulations and the analysis. So when you say it took years to correct, it was when he came in to rezonate in the front, the town made him adhere to the current laws, and he went beyond that.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So obviously, the designs are all professionally engineered, they're all approved, re-approved, and anytime there's a flood, everybody looks to see who's responsible.
Well, what happens if these estimates just don't prove accurate?
The town doesn't get any more liable if it approves it or doesn't, as long as we act.
So it becomes the homeowner's problem again.
Well, that's what FEMA is here for and people like that, and they're all regulated, the flood planes, the waterways, and they just enhance those maps, Alan, as you know.
Yeah, which part of the Lake City is not in. I'm concerned that you're going to be closing the public hearing tonight, when there's four major items that still have not been communicated to the public, one being the community benefit. I'm glad that's in discussions, water and sewer finalization, the lime kiln access, as well as signage. So I just want to make sure that we're not planning on closing the public hearing and providing a vote.
Well, those items would not be in the purview of this board.
They're not?
No.
None of them?
So the town board will have to hold the public hearing with respect to the water and sewer districts.
Okay, what about?
The town board would have to approve the community benefit agreement, and the road access is part of an approved site plan with IBM, and that's being discussed with them by the enforcement authorities.
So these four items are off the table for this board?
For this board.
Okay, thank you. And just, you know, I think this might be the right project. I think it's in the wrong location, and I believe that it's going to be a big blight on this valley aesthetically. And if the idea is to put it in a location that is going to be easily accessible to a highway and other areas in the Hudson Valley, I think a site more up towards the back of the property or more over where the vacant land is on Lime Kiln would be a better site.
Okay.
So thank you.
Thank you, Al. Al, don't forget to sign in. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? Mr. Green, you can sign in afterwards, too, because we know where you live.
I didn't plan on speaking tonight, but after hearing this gentleman before. On Facebook last night, I just happened to be looking at it, and I saw this project was mentioned, and I saw at least 300 likes. People make comments how, "Finally, there's something coming that will benefit our kids, that'll benefit our citizens, our senior citizens, benefit everyone in the town." Now, I wasn't coming here tonight because a young man who went to John Jay High School is playing on television tonight. He's a baseball player. He's playing for the San Francisco Giants, and he went to John Jay High School, and if this facility was there, he'd be playing there on days just raining outside and so on. I just want you to know, for every person that's, every one person that's worried about a tornado, there are hundreds of people that are looking forward to this being completed. So I hope it's done tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Hey, Bill, don't forget to sign in. Bill? Okay, is there anyone else from the public who wishes to speak, for or against this proposal? Okay, let me just poll the board. I mean, oh.
I'd like a minute. I usually don't do this at planning board meetings, but after hearing Bill, he is right. My name is Marge Horton. I've lived in this wonderful town for 37 years. I also happen to be a full-time, although I'm classified as a part-time, Dutchess County legislator. I've done that for 13 years. We all know that we have a possible problem coming, probably right down the road, two, three, four years, as far as IBM leaving the East Fishkill facility. Now, I address you, I address anyone sitting here, and anyone perhaps sitting at home. Do we want to say no to a project that would open up Route 52 to more economic development, perhaps present jobs to our town residents, or maybe, because I have grandchildren that will be looking for jobs shortly, maybe we'll open jobs up to our grandchildren, to our sons or daughters? There are many children in the last 10 years that have become physical therapists. Maybe they could find a job. Maybe there are people whose children are orthopedists. Maybe they could find a job. But, you know, to say, "Oh, what about a tornado? What about a thunderstorm?" Well, you know what? We could all walk out that door in half an hour, whatever how many minutes, and we could have a tornado, a thunderstorm, we could get hit by a car right in this parking lot. So maybe we have to look more calmly and more realistically at the fact that this is a project that would certainly help the economy, not only in this town, but also in the county. And there are people all over the county asking me, "When is it coming, Marge? How many jobs is there going to be, Marge? How do we sign up to have our kids play ball there?" This is an exciting project, and I just hope that everyone has an open mind. Yes, there were questions, and yes, I think these people have done a pretty good job at answering most of those questions. If there's only four issues left, after all the issues that were brought up in the previous two public hearings, you know, they've done a good job. This costs money. All these studies, all these plans, they're not done for free. They cost money. So maybe we have to start moving ahead, planning this project to come here, and it'll all work out, because it always does. There were people 40 or 50 years ago that did not want IBM to come here. Maybe we need to remember that, because how many thousands of East Fishkill residents are now living on IBM pensions? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else? Okay, let me just poll our professionals about closing the public hearing. Brendan, are there issues that you foresee about?
I don't see any significant issues. I think there's a few internal tweaks that we're going to need to, internal circulation and signing, but, you know, they're all relatively minor. The DOT is currently reviewing the project. They've asked for some supplemental information in regards to the signal at Rothel, so I think that's all progressing, and I don't see any significant issues from my end that should prevent the hearing from being closed.
Thank you. Michelle?
No, I do not see any significant issues that would prevent the hearing from being closed either at this point.
Okay, Michelle.
No, I don't see any issues. I got up and spoke about the stormwater. That was the main item that we had concerns over, but they really worked to get the issues addressed. And we can make anything else a condition of approval.
Mr. Bry?
Yes, I can carry the job.
Okay.
No, the open issues as I see here are mostly by the town board and usual things that we clean up between the close of a public hearing and the draft of a resolution for the board.
Okay. Board members, any objections to closing?
None.
No objection, but question. Brendan, are they taking a serious look DOT at that traffic light now? Do we have the?
They've indicated to us that they're going to take a serious look at it. I mean, we're not, you know, we can't predict the outcome of that, but they've asked us for more data. We're going to give them more data, and we'll see where that falls.
Bob, are you okay?
I'm fine. Just a little late to aim.
Okay.
Thanks.
We have a student.
Okay. You need your sign. Mr. Hutzgau can do that for you if you want to come up on the side. That'd be fine. Okay, anyone else, objections to closing the public hearing? Okay, can I have a motion, please, to close the public hearing?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. No objections? Are any objections? Okay. Now, that said, we have to put you on for, I guess the next thing is?
Well, we'll put together a resolution, which will be rather substantial, I think, with this, but you could aim for the next meeting.
Okay.
And if we can have it all together for you, fine.
Let me stop and think about that one.
Oh, that's the 20th.
Not that I have any objection to putting you guys on the same agenda with the Muse again. It was great seeing what people look like in a sleepy, dry state.
I think they're November 5th. They're November 5th.
They're November 5th, okay. So do we want to do the next meeting in two weeks?
Yes, please.
Wonderful. Okay, we're done. Okay, we will see you in two weeks. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Al? Okay, okay. Okay, we'll give everybody a second to get out.
Are we leaving?
No, we're not. Al, thank you for your input. Okay, the next item on the agenda is a referral from the town board.
Are you going to call Bob up?
Yes. Bob, are you going to join us?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Bob is now sitting in. This next item is a referral from the town board. Give her a second. Okay. Basically, this is regarding the Four Corners commercial building, which wants, which now is going to be brought back to a residential and will be converted to apartments. So there's a number of points here that the town board is looking for our inputs on.
Could I just back up a moment?
Absolutely.
What happened is the current owner, this project was approved pursuant to a special permit that exists now in our zoning ordinance that allows a commercial building in the midst of a clustered subdivision, which is Four Corners. It's the only clustered subdivision in the town of this size. So the owner of that property had been trying to rent the property for some time, has been unable to do that, so they filed a petition under the zoning ordinance. A property owner is allowed to petition the town board for, to modify a zoning ordinance. So what they are proposing is to ask the town board to modify the special permit that would allow this building to be converted to a residential use. The town board, under the zoning ordinance, refers this to the planning board for your comments, and that would be what this is tonight. Each member of the board has a copy of the existing special permit, as well as language that would be considered by the town board if they proceed with the petition requested. And you also have a review memo from the town planner with various comments about items that are in the proposal or maybe should be, et cetera. So this is really the forum to get your comments to give back to the town board. If the town board was going to go forward with this, they would hold a public hearing, advertise it, post the property, et cetera, so everyone would be given the opportunity to comment at that time.
Okay.
I just, just to make it easier for you, this is text that was actually provided to you probably a few weeks ago, but I made it into a little bit more easy-to-read format. And we're looking really at Section D, which is in the gray highlight, and that's the section that if, that the town board is asking for your recommendations and review of, which is the language that would be, needed to be added to this special permit in order to allow the use that's proposed. And then I had made separately in a memo, which you all should have had in your packets, just general comments about things that I thought might be considered in the zoning. Some of them were things that were considered in zoning, and some were, might be more site plan issues. But one of the things that I had, a couple of things I had wanted to talk about was that maybe the board may want to consider recommending that the town board specify a maximum number of residents in each dwelling unit, that they determine whether or not they, right now, it looks like it's written, so there'd be one and two bedrooms allowed, and then the planning board may want to consider whether or not they want to specify that those are the only size apartments allowed.
In other words, no studio and no three bedroom?
Correct.
And that ties to the size, correct?
It can tie to the size, and the only, I mean, actually, I think the size specified is currently in the draft is good. I'm just saying that with, because sometimes when you break up a building, it's difficult to break it up into perfect units, so we may want to give them a little bit more flexibility and let them go down to about 800 for a one-bedroom and maybe 1,100 for a two-bedroom.
Okay.
That's up to you. That was just a recommendation that I had. And then I had initially had said that they could potentially reduce the parking, although I've since understood that parking at that site is sometimes utilized by the folks that live there, the residents. So it sounds, that parking is used as overflow, and it's a good idea to keep that parking. There was a comment that perhaps some of the parking could be closer to the entrance of the building for the apartments. So potentially, I suppose the planning board could make a recommendation that they'd want to add parking closer to the building, and maybe they could, maybe they could assign one spot for every unit, and then whatever overflow is needed by the residents, they would just park in the remainder of the spaces that are in the current lot now. That could be a recommendation, or it may not be a recommendation, it's whatever you feel is needed there. And then I just had said, you know, if it's possible, they may want to consider marketing maybe some of the few ground floor apartments to seniors, if they wanted to make maybe some more accessible type of living arrangements and features in those apartments.
Okay. Any, okay, those are all good points. Thank you, Michelle. Let me ask the applicants, if I could. What mix of apartments would you target for this building?
When we first met with Mr. Hickman and Mr. Woods, we talked about doing 10 units in the building, and literally no more than two bedrooms and the rest one bedrooms.
Okay. No studios?
No studios.
No studios? Okay, so...
And again, it's difficult to come into a building like this and retrofit and break it up to meet code, you know, ADA complacency and all the other things you have to do.
And at 10 units, how many, what would be the average size?
Probably the biggest one would be somewheres around 1,000 to 1,080, because you've got to take the, right now, there's almost 9,000 square feet in the building. When you take the common space out, there is an elevator in the building. You know, it's got the back stairwell, the front stairwell. So probably no more than, I'll say 1,100 would be the biggest one.
Okay. Let's do this. Any objections to re-converting this, based on the fact that this has not become, this is not commercially viable? Are there any objections from the board members to re-converting this to residential?
No, I stopped by there today, and it looks like it's, as you say, it might be difficult to convert some areas, but it looks like a nice site for apartments.
Okay. Now, these people would be forced to be part of the homeowners association, correct?
This building is not part of the HOA.
Okay, well then, wouldn't they get the benefits from being part of the HOA? How would that be?
The problem being the benefits is one, I'm not sure the HOA wants us. I've heard some feedback that the pool is so crowded now, they don't want anybody else. The other part would be the cost per unit going to the HOA. You know, all of a sudden, makes it unfeasible.
So they would basically be like, as if they were living a mile down the road there?
Correct.
Okay. They would not have any situational access, that they would be able to take advantage of stuff that's being paid for the homeowners? So that is a complete separate issue?
They participate as a guest, imagine.
Okay.
And part of this could be somebody that's, you know, maybe looking to build at Four Corners, that the house isn't ready yet, they move in, you know, on a temporary basis, or a relative lives there, and they want their parents closer to them, or something along those lines.
Okay. And so you said when you first started talking about it was 10 units, we're talking about eight. Is that, I mean?
That's, I mean, that's in the proposed law right now. It's eight units. So that's, again, another, something else that the planning board can make a recommendation about to the town board.
That changed somewheres from the time we first met.
Okay. So the number's eight. I mean, is... Okay, so, so the number's eight. I mean, is that gonna be?
It's barely doable at ten, as far as the conversion costs and to meet code, and just what's gonna cost taxes to carry the building.
Okay, it's nine thousand square foot, you do ten units. Mine is the thing, I mean, you're looking at a number of apartments that are not real big.
Correct, but part of, part of the building is a two-story building, where I guess the deli was supposed to be originally. So, there's a mezzanine deck built on one half of it. The plan was to deck over the other half, because otherwise you have a thirty-something-foot ceiling over a unit.
And why is eight like a nonstarter? What am I missing?
Uh, just what we have into the building, the cost of conversion of the building to what it's, you know, what it's gonna need to be converted. Just, you do have an elevator in the building, so there is a maintenance factor of that component. You know, you're probably looking at seventy thousand a unit to build. What we have into it for the cost of the purchase, what we'd have to do to site if we're gonna move parking. There's a rec fee, I understand, that has to be paid?
Is there a rec?
From what I see.
How many?
Well, that's all on the table, because it's a bar.
Okay, wow.
So, I mean, for, to do this.
How do you, how do you heat this unit? Is it one central heating unit that takes care of everything, all the apartments?
We would have to break them up individually into, you know, individual units with, you know, heat, electric meter, everything, water, same thing, right?
They'd all be on the individual?
Yeah, and that's, that's, correct. You know, that's something that, again, we have to do to set it up to go that route. And I think, you know, the building itself, I do think, is set up very well to, you know, accommodate certainly some elderly renters, because you have the ramp coming in on the front and the side. You do have the elevator, so the upstairs units, you know, are accessible. Takes the stairs out of play, you know, which you don't normally see an elevator in a heat unit building. You don't usually see it in a ten-unit building.
And you're open to having those type of units available?
Those units, the exterior and the interior of the building is set up that way already. You know, so the elevator is in place, you know, all that, the ramp access is in place. You know, the parking, I'm sure we can shift spaces, you know, to accommodate, to get some spaces closer for tenants. We've always spoke about leaving the excess parking, because we do know that Four Corners residents do use it at the clubhouse for the, in the morning for the buses, I guess, you know, they park in there. You know, so there is a benefit to them also being able to go back and forth, you know, that. So, you know, we're trying to, trying to be good neighbors and find a use for the building. That's not gonna make it, you know, unsightly or a hindrance to the neighborhood.
So, given if we go to ten, like, first of all, ten units, I mean, then it would seem like we would have to kind of really enforce the whole idea of the number of people per unit, correct? I mean, I assume the board would be in favor of some kind of, first of all, you have to understand the trepidation that the homeowners must be feeling. Sitting there, all of a sudden, okay, now we're gonna see these apartment buildings, and now we've got ten of them? I mean, those are, you know, they may as well be studios by the time you get done. So, that's, the, what's the pleasure of the board relative to the number of people in a one-bedroom and a two-bedroom?
Well, it's usually two people per bedroom.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
Two people per bedroom.
Okay.
And of course, the state building code has minimum square footage to accommodate that.
Okay. Do we agree that that should be enforced?
I think, that's not unreasonable.
Okay. How do people, what's the pleasure of the board relative to eight to ten?
Well, they have to rent these, so if they're not rentable units, that's their, their problem in a way.
You'll be back again.
It'd be nice, it'd be nice to see that.
I don't know if we'll be back again.
It's getting me a right of fall to see you guys come in here, you know that. But anyway.
It would be nice to get that place usable.
Yeah, oh, I agree.
If you drove by there, it's, it's been empty, and it's a nice area.
Now, the parking, well, first of all, Michelle, anything's on the apartments then. I've listed, okay, we seem flexible relative to eight to ten on the, the one, you know, two people per bedroom.
How many parking spots out there?
There's forty-seven, is that right? Yeah.
And I think there's an, there's an additional ten or twelve approved that if are needed.
Land banked.
Because, I mean, it looked like there was a lot of parking there.
I think there's plenty of parking.
Didn't seem like there'd be a problem with parking.
Yeah, there's, there's no doubt there's plenty of parking. So, my original comment was maybe they could reduce some of the parking, but I, I didn't realize at the time that it was utilized by folks in the, and that's obviously a community benefit, so.
With the homeowners association?
We've tried. We tried going through the management company. We were told that that was not gonna happen. We had a couple of contacts that we did reach out to, and I think, I believe the town even reached out, and nothing came back. So, we did try to set up a meeting through the management company with the HOA to talk to them about converting this to apartments, and we were told that meeting was not gonna happen.
What about the homeowners association thing? I mean, how do you guys feel about that? I mean?
Well, I'm sure they're not gonna be happy, but they may have said that.
Well, what, what is the, the fee that the homeowners pay now? What is, what does that pay for?
I'm not even sure, but I'm, you know, I'm sure it's gotta be, you know, three hundred dollars a month per home, two hundred.
But again.
Are there, are there any?
There's a cop now.
Is there anybody here from Four Corners?
Yeah.
There's some with? So, it's about two hundred.
I mean, that's a lot of money to add to somebody's rent for something they may not use. Especially if some of that's for landscaping, that's not part of the, the building.
But again, it's not gonna, they're, the tenants would only pay what they're willing to pay.
That's right.
You know, so now it comes out at the other end, and it's a matter of is it worth going down that route?
Well, but I think it's a mutual, it may be a mutually advantageous thing for the homeowners association. They would get some input to make sure that the building's gonna be maintained and deciding. I know there's some deciding pieces down. Things like that would be probably worked into the agreement, the sharing of the parking. Those things might be beneficial to the community. And obviously, since your units are smaller, then maybe there's a different rate of payment that they would pay. I don't, you know, I'm just saying that sometimes, but I think unless there's a face-to-face in that discussion.
Well, we're, we're a little fish dealing with a big fish.
Because it is a unique situation, because when the special permit was created, it was the thought that that would be a little delicate test and everything for the community. But as we know, even before you on, did prior attempts to do that, the, just having that community there isn't enough to support the business, and the pass-through traffic on Phillips Road doesn't necessarily pull off to engender the, the business to stabilize it. So, it was never envisioned, you know, ten, fifteen years ago, when the town allowed this, that it wasn't gonna be successful. And now, the problem is, is that we're dealing with, so that had it been a possibility back then, it probably would have been required to be in the homeowners association from the get-go. You know, just for the continuity of the community. Now, we do have this dilemma. So, I think we, you know, probably would like to hear what the homeowners association has to say. You know, I don't think, I don't think the law can mandate it, you know, it's, it's a, this, this is there already, so it's hard to force it back, you know. If there were gonna be something from the beginning, that's different, you make it part of it. So, something has to be wrestled.
Again, if I'm, if I'm Toll Brothers, and I'm coming to you to ask you to be part of your HOA, you know?
Is it Toll Brothers still in control, or the residents?
I believe it's, I believe Toll's still in control.
Toll's still in control?
Yeah.
Well, that being the case, I think the town could facilitate a meeting with Toll Brothers, because they do a lot of work in the town, they have a lot of projects going. And I think we'd be happy to sit them down with you and see what happens.
We've talked to Toll Brothers a number of times, with my partner Gary Michael.
Yeah, Gary Michael. We've had conversations with Werner Thiesen. He has no intentions. He doesn't want us. He does not want this building. He does not want to have any affiliation, bring us into that association. The other point that I'd like to make is, most of the homeowners have homes that are like two, maybe two thousand square feet. Here, we're talking about a common charge that's gonna be predicated on maybe eight to eleven hundred square feet. The other thing is that we were offering to the association was, since we have forty-seven parking spaces, sometimes the association has these flag-raising ceremonies for prisoners of war. We offered them, you know, they could use the, they've used the parking lot, and we'll continue to allow that to happen. And as far as maintaining the property, I'm newly involved in the project. I'm supposed to be the financial guy. We're gonna be putting money in to make sure that the landscaping does get done, snow removal does get done, any repairs to the building does get done, and the cost to place the property in the condition that it needs to be, to be marketed. So, to answer your question as far as Toll, they, they really don't want us into their association. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. So, I, I think that's an open switch. We think that something has, at least, I, I don't wanna speak for the board, but I would see something as having some kind of accommodation. I mean, you have to understand, I, my heart goes out to the homeowners, who are now suddenly getting this thing converted. What was once a commercial residence, and now suddenly was a restaurant, and now suddenly is an apartment building. Okay, so, with that said, looking at items one through eight on page two, are there any other major recommendations that the board members wish to make?
I assume, I, this is just a question, this is gonna be median? I think it's not gonna be low-income workforce.
No, this is, this is market-rate housing, you know. We're not gonna just go in and minimize what's there.
I just thought I'd ask the question, just to know.
Market-rate housing.
I think the only thing is, we are sympathetic about the ten units, but again, I think that, you know, the, the recommendation about eight hundred square foot for, for one-bedroom units, and then the eleven hundred for the two, you're gonna have trouble meeting that. We would like to see something done relative to the homeowners association. Beyond that, are any other recommendations from the board? No? Okay, Michelle, are there any other questions you would ask us relative to our leanings?
Um, I think, I guess the only other question is, and this, this probably doesn't have to be written necessarily into the language, but it is something to discuss, to think about is the parking, whether or not the planning board feels like it would be a good idea to have parking closer to, it's probably where it's land-banked currently, actually. I'm guessing is the, is the area where I think would be, make the most sense to have resident parking. But I don't know, because I don't know exactly where the landbank parking is on that site. But I think, one, I think it looks like you could probably fit about eight spots or whatever, one per unit there, and that might make sense ultimately, because that might separate the residential parking from overflow parking for the rest of the area.
But if there's sufficient parking ready, why would we want to force them to create more?
I'm not, well, that was originally my comment for reducing the parking, but my understanding is that sometimes it is heavily used, so. It isn't heavily used?
Yeah.
Okay, so, never mind. That's, that was my understanding. Okay.
The big thing is just the proximity. You know, the proximity of the existing parking spaces for retail purposes versus residential purposes. I don't know that that existing parking lot works well, what their, what their plan is.
But that would be a cycle, and you shouldn't.
Okay, any other comments, or?
I just have one quick question, again, the, I know in your comment, you got eleven thousand nine fourteen. Are you intending to add square footage as part of your proposal?
That is the deck that we're talking about with the two-story.
So, you're looking to add square footage?
Correct. The building would not change on the outside at all. It's just decking over the one mezzanine.
But you are looking to add square footage.
And how much would that, do you know how much it would add ultimately, yet?
Top of my head, it might be fifteen hundred, fourteen hundred. It's what brings it from the nine-something to the eleven-something. And that's why we're looking at the ten units out of that eleven thousand square feet, not the nine thousand square feet.
Okay. Well, may the third time be the charm. Okay, any other comments? Any other questions? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.